He woke up before the dawn, Pulled his faded work boots on, Kissed her forehead and grabbed his hat, Checked the fields, checked this and that. Taxes due and the rain ran late, Bank man calling about the rate, But he still bows his head to pray, "Lord, just help me through today." Does not talk much, never brags, But he is a hero with a dusty flag. It is a working man with a quiet soul, Carrying burdens no one knows, Hands all cracked but his word still stands, Strong as the fences on his land. He might never make the evening news, But heaven sees the life he chooses, That a working man, tried and true, Just doing what good men do. Kids asleep when he comes home late, Dinner waiting, woman on a plate, He says, "I am fine, just another day," But his shoulders give his heart away. It is a working man with a quiet soul, Carrying burdens no one knows, Hands all cracked but his word still stands, Strong as the fences on his land. He might never make the evening news, But heaven sees the life he chooses, That a working man, tried and true, Just doing what good men do. Angels walk in muddy boots too. Sun comes up over this old farm town, Rooster calls and the world spins round. Coffee in a chip wide cup, Another day of getting up, Mama hums worn out hymn, While the light comes creeping in, Daddy laces up his boots, Same red clay on the same old roots, We'd never had a fortune to claim, But we had love and a family name. These are classic country days, Simple hearts and honest ways. Front porch swings and an AM song, Holding on when life feels wrong. We might not have a lot to show, But there is peace in how we grow In these classic country days. I learned how faith is made. Car in the yard has some rust and dents, But it still gets us where we went. Friday nights at the high school game, Everybody knows your name. These are classic country days, Simple hearts and honest ways. Front porch swings and an AM song, Holding on when life feels wrong. We might not have a lot to show, But there is peace in how we grow In these classic country days. I learned how faith is made. One day I might leave this place, But I will carry every trace. Cause in those classic country days, I found my soul in simple ways. Some songs never leave your bones. We met down by the riverside, Yellow dress, July sky. You laughed when I forgot my line, And somehow you still became mine. We did not have a lot of cash, Old truck full tank hopeful gas. Friday nights in a borrowed suit, You in bare feet looking cute. And all these years have come and gone, But girl, my heart is holding on. This is old fashioned love in a modern world. Slow dancing in the kitchen with my favorite girl. We got bills and we got scars, But we still wish on the same old stars. We do not need a diamond ring To know what forever means. Just old fashioned love, Tried and true. Every road that leads to you. Baby toys and a midnight cry, You and I both tired eyes, But when you lean into my chest, I know my life is more than bliss. This is old fashioned love in a modern world. Slow dancing in the kitchen with my favorite girl. We got bills and we got scars, But we still wish on the same old stars. We do not need a diamond ring To know what forever means. Just old fashioned love, Tried and true. Every road that leads to you. Time just makes this love more real. Grandpa kept his Bible by the easy chair, Pages worn thin from every prayer. He would read out loud on Sunday nights By the yellow glow of a simple light. He did not preach with a pointed hand. He showed his faith like a quiet man In the way he worked and the way he gave, In the way he bowed down at the grave. He said, "This old book has carried me Through every storm and every sea. It held me up when I fell down. It turned my lost heart back around." He did not wear a preacher's robe, Just calloused hands and a gentle soul. But he showed me what grace can do With that old Bible in plain view. Now it sits on my own shelf, Marked with notes and his old self. On the days I feel afraid, I find the pages where he prayed. He said, "This old book has carried me Through every storm and every sea. It held me up when I fell down. It turned my lost heart back around." He did not wear a preacher's robe, Just calloused hands and a gentle soul. But he showed me what grace can do With that old Bible in plain view. Faith can live in simple things. Neon buzzing at the end of town, Same old bar with the stools worn down. I took a seat where I used to stay, But it all felt different today. Used to drown my hurt in here, Cheap whiskey and a cheaper cheer. But tonight the bottle looks like rain And I'm tired of loving pain. I see my reflection in the glass And I know this time must pass. So pour me one last goodbye, Then I'm walking out under a clean night sky. I do not want this old routine Of broken hearts and busted dreams. I'm not who I used to be. There is more to life than misery. Yeah, pour me one last goodbye. I'm done watching my soul run dry. Jukebox playing our old song, But I do not feel like singing along. I whisper thank you to the past, Then let it go and stand at last. So pour me one last goodbye, Then I'm walking out under a clean night sky. I do not want this old routine Of broken hearts and busted dreams. I'm not who I used to be. There is more to life than misery. Yeah, pour me one last goodbye. I'm done watching my soul run dry. Some doors close so you can breathe again. So pour me one last goodbye. Rusty Chevy in the backyard wheels Used to be the only thing we would need. Friday nights polish up the chrome, Driving circles call it home. We packed that bed with fishing poles, Old cassette tapes and borrowed golds. You were laughing in the shotgun seat, Bare feet on the dash to the radio beat. That old truck holds our best years, First slow dance, first real tears. Every dent and every scar Knows exactly who we are. You can sell the house, change the town, Tear these old roads up and down. But there is one thing time gets stuck In the heart of that old truck. Keys do not turn like they used to do. Paint is faded but the sky is blue. Sometimes I sit behind that wheel, Close my eyes and just let it heal. That old truck holds our best years, First slow dance, first real tears. Every dent and every scar Knows exactly who we are. You can sell the house, change the town, Tear these old roads up and down. But there is one thing time gets stuck In the heart of that old truck. Some journeys never leave the driveway. Town square glowing on a Saturday night, Kids run circles in the street light bright. Music pouring from a corner stage, Same three chords that never age. Farm boys cleaning their Sunday jeans, Girls in boots a little country queen. Some folks waltz them two steps slow, Every heart has somewhere to go. It is a small town Saturday night Where the stars feel big And the worries feel like Where everybody knows your name And the world feels safe and tame. Might not be much on a TV screen, But this is where my soul runs clean. Yeah, small town Saturday night Can fix a weary life. Sheriff flames on a parking sign, Laughs and jokes keeps it fine. Old men talk on the courthouse stairs About old days and answered prayers. It is a small town Saturday night Where the stars feel big And the worries feel like Where everybody knows your name And the world feels safe and tame. Might not be much on a TV screen, But this is where my soul runs clean. Yeah, small town Saturday night Can fix a weary life. Big dreams fit just fine on these little streets. We stood in front of that old white church, Nervous hands and a cotton shirt. Preacher smiled and the organ played. Mama cried but she was okay. You said, "I do" with a shaky laugh. We were so broke we could only have Fill the car for a honeymoon, But love felt like a harvest moon. And we built a life, all simple vows, Hand in hand, then kids and house. We had storms and we had sun. We lost some fights but we never run. Looking back on all we have been through, I would still say, "I do with you." Yeah, we built a life that still holds true On those two words, "I do." Years' road lines on both our faces, But I still see that girl in laces When the world feels hard and cold. Your ring still shines like solid gold. And we built a life, all simple vows, Hand in hand, then kids then house. We had storms and we had sun. We lost some fights but we never run. Looking back on all we have been through, I would still say, "I do with you." Yeah, we built a life that still holds true On those two words, "I do." Some promises never lose their shine. He kept a box under his old bed frame, Filled with medals and a folded name. Never spoke much of where he went, Only stared long at the government tent. Some nights he would sit out on the lawn, Stare at the sky till near the dawn. Grandma would bring him a coffee cup. He said, "Just watching the stars show up." He was a quiet kind of brave, Carried things he would never say. He fought a war far from this town And built a life on solid ground. No parade when he came home, Just a front porch light that shone. But in my eyes, he always stayed A quiet kind of brave. Now that old flag hangs by my door, I know it cost him more and more. Every time it waves out there, I feel his hand upon my prayer. He was a quiet kind of brave, Carried things he would never say. He fought a war far from this town And built a life on solid ground. No parade when he came home, Just a front porch light that shone. But in my eyes, he always stayed A quiet kind of brave. Some battles never make a sound. Clock on the wall says 6:00 a.m. Coffee perks while the rooster crows again. He slides that lunch pail off the shelf, Kisses her and whispers to himself. Same old factory down on Main. Same long hours back in pain. But he keeps going every day For the kids in the yard where they play. That is what a good man does, Shows up even when it is tough. He does not talk big, does not brag loud, But he makes his family proud. He stands firm when times get rough. He calls that ordinary love. But heaven calls it more than enough. Yeah, that is what a good man does. He comes home tired with a crooked smile. Listens to their stories for a while. Tucks them in and bows his head, Thanking God for daily bread. That is what a good man does, Shows up even when it is tough. He does not talk big, does not brag loud, But he makes his family proud. He stands firm when times get rough. He calls that ordinary love. But heaven calls it more than enough. Yeah, that is what a good man does. Heroes wear work shirts and tired eyes. Grandma's kitchen smelled like grace. Biscuits rise and smile on her face. Radio low with a gospel hymn, Sunlight pouring through the window trim. She would hum along while pots would boil. Hands worn thin from years of toil, But her laugh was young and bright, Like a lantern in the night. I still taste love in that old cornbread, Still hear her voice and the words she said. Life is hard but God is near. Just keep walking, do not lose your cheer. Flower on her apron, prayer in her tone. In that kitchen, I was never alone. Yeah, Grandma's Kitchen taught me well About the stories our hearts tell. Now my own stove flickers on, I hum her hymn, she is never gone. Kids run circles just like I did then. And that old song starts again. I still taste love in that old cornbread, Still hear her voice and the words she said. Life is hard but God is near. Just keep walking, do not lose your cheer. Flower on her apron, prayer in her tone. In that kitchen, I was never alone. Yeah, Grandma's Kitchen taught me well About the stories our hearts tell. Some recipes are made of faith, Not flour burned or beer. Rain on the tin roof, soft and slow. Lightning flickers in a gentle glow. We turn the lamps down low tonight. Let the storm provide the light. Kids are sleeping down the hall. Dog curled up by the kitchen wall. You pour two glasses, take my hand. We move like only old hearts can. Dancing in a small house storm, Bare feet on a hardwood wall. Thunder rolling like an old drumbeat. Your head on my shoulder feels complete. We do not need a neon sign. This little word is yours and mine. Yeah, while the rain keeps falling down, We are the richest folks in town. Wind might shake these windows thin, but it cannot shake the faith we are in. Every drop that hits the ground makes our love a deeper sound. Dancing in a small house storm, bare feet on a hardwood wall. Thunder rolling like an old drumbeat. Your head on my shoulder feels complete. We do not need a neon sign. This little world is yours and mine. Yeah, while the rain keeps falling down, we are the richest folks in town. Some storms just play our favorite song. We carved our names in that old oak tree. Back when sixteen felt wild and free. Truck bed blanket, summer stars. Talked all night about leaving these yards. Time moved on and took its due. You found college, I found blue. I joined the crew in my daddy's shop, rinsed on cars, watched dreams start. But every time I pass that hill, our names are shining on that bark still. Life did not go like we both planned, but some things time cannot demand. We may be older miles apart, but that old oak holds my heart. Yeah, carved in wood, not just in mine is the love we left behind. Heard you married in another state. Hope your mornings feel first rate. Sometimes I park and climb that slope. Lay my hand on that old oak. 'Cause every time I pass that hill, our names are shining on that bark still. Life did not go like we both planned, but some things time cannot demand. We may be older miles apart, but that old oak holds my heart. Yeah, carved in wood, not just in mine is the love we left behind. Some stories live in rings of wood. She walks the aisles of the grocery store, trying not to look at the total no more. Coupons folded in a worn-out purse, counting pennies, whispering verse. Kids need shoes and the rent is due, but she smiles like the sky is blue. She will skip her meal without a sound, so their little worlds keep spinning round. That is a small-town hero. No magazine, no spotlight glow, no silver screen. Just a heart that chooses every day to give herself away. She does not wear a cape or crown, just drives back roads across this town. But heaven knows and angels see what a small-town hero she will always be. Late-night dishes in the sink. Kitchen quiet, time to think. She bows her head by a broken chair. Says, "Thank you, Lord, for getting us there." That is a small-town hero. No magazine, no spotlight glow, no silver screen. Just a heart that chooses every day to give herself away. She does not wear a cape or crown, just drives back roads across this town. But heaven knows and angels see what a small-town hero she will always be. Some crowns are worn in secret. The old clock chimes in the hallway still. Same three notes, same little thrill. This house has seen our darkest nights and every one of our little fights. We slammed doors and we cried along. We almost threw away this home. But somehow love pulled back the reins and taught us both through all the pain. This old house remembers every tear we ever cried. Every winter, every ember, every time we almost said goodbye. But the roof still holds, the walls still stay, 'cause grace kept finding us a way. Yeah, this old house remembers and it sings of better days. Now the kids have left their rooms. Echoes live where toys once bloomed. We sit close on the same old couch and let the peace just fill us out. This old house remembers every tear we ever cried. Every winter, every ember, every time we almost said goodbye. But the roof still holds, the walls still stay, 'cause grace kept finding us a way. Yeah, this old house remembers and it sings of better days. Love can turn a roof and walls into a story. He lives along at the end of the lane. White-haired man with a gentle name. Kids ride by and wave their hands. He tips his hat, still understands. Used to dance with his late, sweet bride every Friday by the riverside. Now he hums their favorite song and walks that river all night long. He is the last light on Old Mill Road, keeping watch as the years unload. He does not ask for much at all, just a sunrise and a robin's call. Time may bend his back and knees, but his soul still rides a breeze. Yeah, he is the last light on Old Mill Road, carrying love's old coat. On Sundays, he will dress up neat, sit in the same old church front seat, whisper names in every prayer, half in heaven, half still there. He is the last light on Old Mill Road, keeping watch as the years unload. He does not ask for much at all, just a sunrise and a robin's call. Time may bend his back and knees, but his soul still rides a breeze. Yeah, he is the last light on Old Mill Road, carrying love's old coat. Some flames burn quiet and long. Alarm clock rings, but I hit snooze twice. Head still full of worrying price. News says fear and the screens all shout, but my heart is tired of burning out. So I grab my keys and I leave that phone. Drive out where the pines have grown. Pull off the road where the fields turn white. Let the silence climb inside. Sometimes you gotta step away from the noise this world plays. Find a sky with room to breathe. Let the wind pull up your sleeve. Say a prayer with no big words. Let your soul be gently heard. Yeah, sometimes you gotta step away just to make it through the day. I talk to God like an old dear friend. Tell him things I cannot admit. Then I feel that weight release. In the quiet, there is peace. Sometimes you gotta step away from the noise this world will play. Find a sky with room to breathe. Let the wind pull up your sleeve. Say a prayer with no big words. Let your soul be gently heard. Yeah, sometimes you gotta step away just to make it through the day. The world is loud, but grace is louder. One day my hands will finally still. No more workout in those fields. Boots will rest by the old wood door. Heart will not chase one day no more. Kids will gather from near and far. Fill the driveway with their cars. Talk too loud around the table. Tell old stories while they are able. And I hope they say I love them well through every high and every hell that I showed up when times were bad. Did my best as a friend and dad. I do not need a statue stone, just a place and hearts called home. Yeah, when my race is finally run, I hope they say I love them. Maybe a song on an old guitar will drift out underneath the stars. They will laugh at how I sang off key, but still let the music be. And I hope they say I love them well through every high and every hell that I showed up when times were bad. Did my best as a friend and dad. I do not need a statue stone, just a place and hearts called home. Yeah, when my race is finally run, I hope they say I love them. The best legacy is a warm memory. I took a walk behind the barn today. Needed space to let my mind drift away. Wind pushed clouds across the sky. Felt like God Himself passing by. Grass leaned low like it understood every burden I carried from my childhood. Silence wrapped its arms around, made my heartbeat slow down. Sometimes peace is not a prayer, but just the feeling of open air. Back behind the barn, I find the quiet corners of my mind where no one knows what I've been through, except the sky and maybe you. If life gets loud and out of hand, I walk this little patch of land and feel my spirit slowly warm. Back behind the barn, steel guitar echoes from a distant farm, soft enough to keep me calm. I close my eyes, breathing deep, letting memories rise and then fall. letting memories rise and then fall asleep. Back behind the barn, I find the quiet corners of my mind where no one knows what I've been through, except the sky and maybe you. If life gets loud and out of hand, I walk this little patch of land and feel my spirit slowly warm. Back behind the barn. Sometimes healing is a place. I found a shoebox in the attic dust full of treasures from the days of us. Tickets, stubs, photos, torn and bent. Little notes we wrote but never sent. Young love scribbled in childish tone. Dreams we whispered when we were grown. I sit cross-legged on the floor, letting yesterday open its door. Funny how old paper can still burn with every memory taking its turn. These attic dreams bring me back again to who we were and what we might have been. Some moments fade, but some stay. Still living softly in the heart they fill. Even though time changed the things we planned, I still feel yesterday in my hands holding pieces of our teenage beams inside. These attic dreams. Steel guitar hums through my phone, a song we claimed as our very own. I close the box, but not the glow. Some loves stay even when they go. These attic dreams bring me back again to who we were and what we might have been. Some moments fade, but some stay. Still living softly in the heart they fill. Even though time changed the things we planned, I still feel yesterday in my hands holding pieces of our teenage beams inside. These attic dreams. Some memories choose us forever. First lights stretching over county fields. Misty roads where the red dirt yields. Laced by boots on the wooden stair, breathing deep that cool, clean air. Thermals rattles on the truck front seat. Old bench creaks to a steady beat. Gravel pops as the wheels roll slow. Nowhere special I need to go. Sometimes a road's not where you run. It's just a place to meet the sun. And this small-town morning feels like grace. Soft wind brushing off yesterday's wake. No big plans and no grand scheme, just me and a slowly waking dream. If the world starts shouting later on, I'll remember how the day begun in this small-town morning, wide and clear. My heart feels right just standing here. Radio hums a gentle tune. Nothing loud, just room to bloom. Sun climbs higher, paints the sky, turning doubts to reasons why. And this small-town morning feels like grace. Soft wind brushing off yesterday's wake. No big plans and no grand scheme, just me and a slowly waking dream. If the world starts shouting later on, I'll remember how the day begun in this small-town morning, wide and clear. My heart feels right just standing here. Some days fix you before they start. We met by chance at a downtown fair. You held a recordwind in your hair. Said you liked songs that feel like home. I laughed and said, "That's where I roam." We walked past tents in the food truck line. Shared cheap coffee caught it fine. You told stories with an easy grin. Something quiet woke up within. Didn't plan on changing course, but some hearts move with gentle force. Since that little downtown night, my whole world's turned out just right. You took the rust off all my days, turned old worries into praise. If love's a song with brand-new chords, you're the line my soul's been looking for. Everything changing soft streetlight on that little downtown night. Steel guitar echoes in my chest when you curl up on my vest. Funny how a simple walk and talk became the road we chose to walk. Since that little downtown night, my whole world's turned out just right. You took the rust off all my days, turned old worries into praise. If love's a song with brand-new chords, you're the line my soul's been looking for. Everything changing soft streetlight on that little downtown night. Some miracles wear denim and dust.